...the others, but still maintain his overall identity. I guess the idea here is that gasoline, half the time, is obviously bought by women, and they like nice, clean, and bright environments, as anyone would, but they want to make sure that if it's a good facility, it's much more likely to bring in everybody, including the female customers.
I did notice both facilities, Shorewood and Plainfield, both have the pet wash. Is that a part of the model?
Yes. There'd be one pet wash here, and it would be on the car wash building. So we do offer that as well.
Your pet goes through the wash?
Yeah.
You've got to be careful with the little dogs.
It's actually just a room at the end of the car wash with the storefront door on it. You can walk in with your dog typically, and I don't think cats would appreciate it a lot. And then there's a table, stainless steel table inside which you can walk your dog up on, and then you can pick and choose the things you want to do as far as washing and soaping and so forth, spraying off and cleaning your dog. You can buy towels and so forth. It's quite popular, especially with the larger dogs.
Yeah.
That would be part of what we'd be intending on putting here. It's a small part of what we do, but it is part of the car wash building. I neglected, I probably should just mention that.
No, I just noticed it at the other two, and I didn't see it on the drawing, so just ask.
All that you proposed, eight feet?
Yes.
You always go eight feet, or do they make it 12 feet?
Well, there's a possibility. I mean, the manufacturer allows us to put it in four-foot increments.
I think one of the residents mentioned that, that the trucks were higher and that they would like the blockade so they wouldn't be seen so much of it.
Yeah, I mean, the height of the fence is obviously up to the village because they have the restriction on the height, but if it's part of the approval, you know...
Yeah, I think the 12 is outside of our ordinance. It is? I think so.
It is.
Okay.
My only concern was then, because...
It can be a part of the special use conditions if that's the desire of the village board.
Yeah. One thing that I was talking about this weekend would be, you know, for the residents to the south, and I should preface this and say, you know, I really do appreciate your openness and willingness to change the site plan based on the comments that you've heard from residents, to try and mitigate the impact to them. But along the south property line, along Adam, it's just out of view here, the... So I walked the street here on Saturday, and on the south side of Adam, there's parkway trees and that. Would you be interested, and, you know, when I talked this weekend, in supplying parkway trees along Adam Avenue? I know you technically wouldn't be required to do that, but that would be something I could see that would mitigate that visual impact coming from, all the way from the site, really blocking it from the start. Is that something?
Well, I can't really speak for the landowner, but having been in this process with them, I don't think they'd have a problem with that.
Okay.
No problem with that at all.
Okay. That would be helpful. I mean, and again, I really do appreciate... The other question is on the canopy and the building elevations. Again, all of my questions relate to the impact to the residents, you know, that are just north of this, that have a cornfield now. What is... Did you submit the elevations? I don't know that I've seen them for that canopy, because I was down in Plainfield at the facility on Sunday, and the other one in Shorewood, and I should say, I mean, the two elevations are different. The one in Plainfield is the bright red, but the one in Shorewood is a much more earth tone type of a canopy. Is that... Which one would you be utilizing for the site?
Well, I don't know if it's been decided completely. We had presented in the renderings something similar to Plainfield, but we have options available. So it just depends upon each different facility and how it gets put together. Shorewood was a much larger building, and it had other food service inside of it, so it just changed the way we looked at doing that project. But we're open to suggestions.
Okay. Yeah, I would see that the earth tone would be much less of an impact to the residents on the north side of the road if that would be something that you could commit to. I think that would be helpful. What else has I... I was inside both the facilities this weekend. I will say that they're honestly some of the nicest facilities, you know, C-Store and gas facilities that I've been in in a long time. I really do give credit to the owner on that. Same thing with the car wash. So one of my biggest concerns, and you kind of touched on, is, you know, the car wash that just went up on Orchard Road, the vacuums are outside. Again, it's the long line of parking with the hoses that you can clean out your vehicle. The concern that I had for this area was that car wash, you can hear the whistling of the vacuum, and that sounds like a C-NOW old person saying that, but really, you can stand in Walmart, and you can hear the hissing of those vacs. And if I was sitting in the backyard of my house in Foxmore or Fairfield, that would be honestly an impact to me. But I was advised that the pumps are inside, and I can really testify that you can't hear those vacuums. When I was down in Plainfield and Shorewood this weekend, unless you're in the parking stall, it just sounds like a shop vac, or even less than that, really. So it doesn't have that high-pitched squeal that we've heard on Orchard Road, which was a huge concern for me. You said you looked at a berm, a long 30, a small, you know, two- or three-foot berm. Is that something that you can facilitate?
I...
That you'd be able to... Because the sites that I was at didn't have a berm, and again, streetlights going right across 30 into these folks' backyard. Again, we're trying to do every little thing that we can that, you know, obviously doesn't put you guys out of business, but also mitigates the impacts to the residents to the north.
Well, as I mentioned, we're going to go through all the approval process, including the village's ordinance for landscaping. And if that were part of what was required, that's something we would provide.
Well, we can attach that. We can, I mean, we can ask of that in the special use, which is why, if it's written in the special use, I mean, I could see that being necessary.
Yeah.
Okay.
And keep in mind that all over our sites, we do full-site photometrics. All of our exterior lighting is LED lighting, and we have no spillage or no spillage off of our sites for the lighting. So in regards to the lighting across the street, they'll get a lot more light off of 30 than they ever... They won't see any far.
From your light... And your light poles are 18-foot on this.
Brian, 18 feet.
Which is a good thing to highlight, actually, because I think our standard is 20, and so this is two feet lower, so really doing what we can, at least to mitigate, and that's by annexation agreement here. The back of these buildings, are you... I don't know what the architectural elevation looks like on the back of these. Again, I'm thinking about light spillage, if there's wall packs on the back of these buildings, what would that impact be to the south?
The wall packs on the buildings themselves are fairly minor. They're mainly there to meet building code standards for overhead door, over the doors and along walkways. So we're not really trying to light up drive aisles or parking lots from the building.
But you do have wall packs on the backs of the buildings?
And I believe they were on the photometrics, weren't they not, Brian? They were included in the photometric plan that showed those wall packs.
Okay. And did you... Will you be allowed, or would they be asking for signage on the rear of these buildings facing the residential?
No. No.
Okay.
No, we would be strictly, you know, monument, sign out on the street, signs facing the street. There may be a little bit, a few directional signs on the drive aisle in the back, just pointing people which direction to go, but nothing facing the back, no.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? I do appreciate your willingness to work with us, to call some of the concerns from the residents. Yeah. So this is for discussion, so if you have discussion, let's hear it.
I mean, I pointed out a couple of my concerns, and it seems like you guys are very willing to work with lessening the impact on the residential folks and hearing their concerns and addressing them, more so than I've ever seen with any developer, so...
Well, as with all of our developments, our client, our owner of Gas &amp; Wash prides himself on being a good neighbor and wants to be part of the community. He doesn't want people not liking his business. He wants to be part of the community, so supports the community, and he wants business from the people around him, so he wants to have a good business that's not impacting adversely.
It's still, though, for me, it still has intense a use as it was prior. What we've done is we've divided the lot differently, and I think that if we approve this, whatever lot is south of here, we're going to have one hell of a time finding something that's going to fit as a buffer between a gas station and some adjacent condos. What are you going to put there? We still haven't solved the problem of there's one Gordon Road and Fairfield-Foxmore has one method of ingress and egress. And so by taking this and shoving it to the north now, we've eliminated traffic on Adam, but now this right-in, right-out is going to be even more used, and the potential for accidents is greater at this right-in, right-out. We still have the diesel fuel, which, as I understand, prompts the idea of gaming, or gaming availability. Is that correct? Is it the diesel pumps that do that?
The...
Yeah. I'm asking staff, sir.
Oh, okay.
I believe it's liquor license.
So it's the liquor... Okay, all right. So it's... Now I guess I'm asking you, are you planning on having gaming?
Yes, we are planning on having gaming. Gaming is regulated by the State Gaming Act, and if communities opt in or opt out of the Gaming Act, that determines the availability of us applying for gaming within that community.
Does Shorewood or Plainfield, are they, do they allow gaming?
I don't believe Shorewood does, and I don't believe Plainfield does either.
Surewood does.
They just passed it, it sounds like.
Are you going to do gaming in Shorewood, then?
Teresa Denny, comments?
I'm sorry, what?
Either one of them have any comments, questions that you might have?
Teresa?
The questions have been answered, I think, based on what the other trustees have asked. I do appreciate that you guys have changed this pretty significantly from, certainly from the first one that we've seen and even the second revision we saw with the apartment buildings, that I know that some of the residents were thinking that's what we were looking at tonight.
Yeah, that's it for now. Yeah, unless you put a building on Lot 2 with gaming, I don't have any problem with gaming. We don't have a problem with gaming on any other gas station, or we don't have any say in it. The state does it. But we've never had, we've never wanted, like a Swiggo does, where you have a gaming room, and it's the whole building's a gaming room, and that's it. And this is not like that. It's just like anybody else's, and it's up to the state on that. I am happy that I see on here the landscape buffer, and that was the one where the lady talked about, where the cars were shooting out and the lights would go in her window. And with that buffer across there, it wouldn't do that. And as far as the diesel fuel, like I said, I've got 100 buses that are all diesel, and anybody wants to come over there and stand right in the middle over anything, you can't smell diesel anymore. If you've got an old truck, and it's a beater, you know, and, yeah, you could smell that probably, but... And some of these guys will be that way. Like you say, landscapers, they've got a beat-up truck, you might smell the diesel a little bit, but as far as 90% of the cars, you can go to a gas station, you can't smell, you see diesel.
Kind of along those lines. One question that I had was, I mean, are you catering... So this is not a destination location. This is, folks are driving past and decide to circle through the site, either wash it, gas, you know, convenience store and that. Are you trying to cater to semis into the site, or are you trying to, not discourage that, but I guess, how does this revised site plan impact that?
Well, I mean, again, I think as Scott pointed out, this is not a destination. We're... The traffic that passes on US Route 30, we're happy to get a small percentage of that traffic. An even smaller percentage of that traffic is associated with the over-the-road trucks or the semi-trailers. For the diesel that we do sell in our typical locations, the vast majority of that diesel is from, you know, different types of vehicles. It can be a pickup truck, it can be an automobile even, taking diesel, it can be an articulated vehicle landscaper pulling a trailer behind. So a very, very small percentage of that is over-the-road trucks. And obviously, if one of those vehicles come in here, we want to make sure that we have no safety issues within the site, and that's the primary reason for moving the diesel area fill-up away from the front of the building up on Route 30, where the majority of the traffic's going to be, the auto fill-up on the north end of the building, on the north side of the convenience store.
So as vehicles pull into the diesel pumps, and they're facing north, what direction should they leave when they come up? Can you scroll up a little bit, please? What direction should they leave when they come up and they either can turn left or right? What direction should they leave?
I'll have Scott go through that with you.
Yeah, we'll have some directional signage to instruct the trucks to turn east to the right. They can then either go to the right-out on 30 to continue east, or if they want, they can come back around the site to go back out onto Gordon, to go back north, to turn left, to go west on 30.
Now, if they turn east, though, if they turn east and go right, we all know what car washes are like when it's the first spring day and after snow and that sort of thing, and we've got 1, 2, 3, 12, 15, 18 spots here for vehicles. What happens once this is full? The vacuum spaces are full, and there's still cars trying to get into here, but there's trucks trying to turn right and get out of here at the right-in, right-out. How's that work?
On those days, instead of having potentially two employees in the car wash, they'll have three, they'll staff up, and they'll get those cars through. They can speed that conveyor system up if they'd like and get those cars through. And it's a very quick system to begin with, and with three queuing lanes, three stacking lanes, it keeps the queuing lane constantly full because there's always somebody coming through. So the idea here is that we're always moving cars through as quickly as possible. So we rarely have any, ever have problems with this system because of that setup with three stacking lanes and one queuing lane. You can put a lot of cars through here very quickly and not... We don't want backups because people don't come to convenience stores when it's not convenient. So they make every effort, then, to make sure those cars are moving through very quickly. So with the third staff person, one out the pay stations, making sure that everyone's having no problem getting through the pay lanes, one at the queuing, coming into the wash, and one walking around, taking care of miscellaneous things, cleaning up the site, helping other clients, customers out. The intent is to keep that moving through quickly.
Because what I see is I see the potential of problems, people trying to get into the stacking lanes, and then arguments ensuing, saying, "Well, I was here first." "No, I was here first." And then you've got the people in the vacuum spaces that are looking at these two people arguing, saying, "I don't care who was here first, I'm just trying to get out of here," is what I see happening. That's a pinch point, potentially. And then you've got your diesel trucks turning right, so that concerns me.
Does that... Do we have stacking requirements for drive-through or for car washes? And if so, does this meet that?
We do have, for drive-throughs, we do have stacking requirements. Honestly, I'll have to look what it is specifically for car washes. I don't know off the top of my head. For drive-through restaurants, I know it's 6 to 10, which they meet around the convenience store, but for car washes, I'm going to have to double-check. I don't know what it is exactly.
Okay. And I can add, I've worked with a restaurant development that goes with the double-drive-through now at this point, that does scoot people through. I mean, having three sale points is really, I think, could speed up the process there. But I also understand what you're saying. I've been to several that back up on the first nice day of the year, backs up, as long as there are employees there that, you know, that mitigate that, so we don't have backups onto 30 and that kind of thing. Obviously, nobody wants that. I think that could probably be mitigated. Any other questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So this is for discussion tonight. Would like to really give them a decision at some point. So if we're comfortable, I'd love to get your thoughts, a straw poll of sorts, whether you want to proceed with the ordinance for the next board meeting. It'd probably be listed for action that night, because we've talked about this two or three times at our level now, unless there's substantial changes made to the site plan, but it would be likely for action in two weeks. So what are your, what's your pleasure?
No. Well, yes. They've really modified, in my opinion, satisfied the concerns that I saw from the residents.
Okay.
I think I'm a no.
Teresa? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just based on my conversations with the residents in the area, I don't think they want the gas station there. So I'm going to say no.
I think they answered all the requests of the people, that the problems, I think some... So I'd say yes. We could always vote on it sometime.
Yeah.
But...
And I know Pete had to leave before this, and so what I think we do at this point is move forward with an ordinance for a vote, one way or the other, at the next available meeting, which I think is two weeks from today, so we can push this forward. So if you have any questions or comments between now and then, please get those to staff. And if there's any residents out there that have questions and they need some answers, you know, one thing that I did suggest that we've done in the past is the petitioners has made themselves available to give a presentation, or at least talk to residents who have concerns, and walk them through that. I think that can go a long way in this situation where there are residents that feel like they could be impacted by this, and so I would offer that up if that's something that folks would love to coordinate. Again, outside the village, you know, wouldn't be a meeting with us, it'd be a meeting with the developer. I think that would help. So we'll move forward with this for a vote on in two weeks.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The owner also, give an idea maybe what the second... Because the rumor now was already, you know, I don't think that would even be feasible, but I don't want people getting the idea that you're thinking about apartments or whatever on that second spot. I don't know what you're thinking, you probably have no idea right now, but what you wouldn't put on it, like apartments or whatever.
I'm sorry, I had a little hard time hearing you up there.
Oh, okay. I just, what you're going to do with that second, the lot, the 2.6 acres, I think the people already had the idea that there might be apartments, and we don't, you know, we don't think that's feasible, and they probably don't either, but we want to know what the landowner thinks about what he's going to do with that property.
Well, we're open to, you know, almost anything commercial. We did entertain apartments, but, you know, it was just being entertained. At this point, we really don't have anything definite, but we're willing to put the trees along the southern border, like the mayor asked us to. I mean, we have no problem doing that. We've gone, we could add a berm with that as well, you know, so...
Okay.
But nothing definite yet.
All right.
Yeah, you know, we're landowner also, we're real interested in being a good neighbor. We understand your concerns, you know, not unsympathetic to that. You know, it could be, that's not really the way it's set up now geared to anything high-level commercial, that's for sure. It's going to be hidden, there's going to be a big wall, you know, I, you know, I don't know. I will, you know, we would take suggestions, that's for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll move on to Item B for discussion. We have a mailbox policy, and...
I'll start with it. I tried to take the crux of the conversation at the last meeting, along with subsequent conversation with President Brawley, and basically listed two options here to see if either of these fit what you're looking for, or if there's some other thing you would like. So basically, the big difference between the two options is how it handles a mailbox damaged when the snow from the plow hits it. In Option 1, we reimburse no matter what the damage is. In Option 2, we would reimburse if the snow breaks the post of the mailbox, but not if it simply detaches the mailbox from the post. Also changed and made it $75. And then in here mentions that we would not reimburse if it's not installed per the post office guidelines. That's, you know, if they install it so it's hanging out past the curb line where a plow is sort of destined to hit it, then we would not reimburse. Director Hoppin said, usually if they find those, they try and alert the homeowner to that ahead of time, that there's an issue. And with that, we're just looking for feedback.
All right. Thank you. Go.
I agree with Option 1. I still think, and I like the fact, that Public Works goes out and takes a look at mailboxes prior to the start of snow season. I would assume that if they, if a homeowner gets a letter, that neither one of these options is in play. Is that correct?
Usually if we warn them ahead of time, yes, that it's not installed properly or is already damaged to a state that...
I just think that... So I like Option 2. So let me just go through the thought process. The $75, we're not, it seems like everybody agrees with, and if we hit your mailbox, that's not what we're talking about. But if snow causes damage, snow thrown by us, one, we'd really like to avoid, if we can, our Public Works folks having to go out and inspect 8,000... How many houses do we have in Montgomery?
Estimated about 6,000 mailboxes at the curb.
Okay, so if there's 6,000, like, I'd really not, it's not really in my best interest or my desires to have us inspecting the quality of mailboxes every year. But one thing I was thinking that would work is not doing that. And if your box itself falls down because it got hit by snow, generally speaking, I think of the pain to the resident. They'll be able to reattach that on there. But if the post breaks, then that's a significant, and I've had to do that myself, you know, new concrete in a hole, significant impact or, you know, a pain, more or less. And so no matter what, if your pole breaks, I think we can do $75. If your box falls off, then you can reattach that. And this is all if we've not hit it. I think that's logical. It saves Public Works staff time. I'd actually be curious to hear what Director Hoppin said, what your thoughts are on staff time on that.
One of the issues I have, just real quick, on Page 2, it says bury your post no more than 24 inches deep. So I don't know if this USPS thing was in Florida, or what, if they've never heard a freeze thaw, but 24 inches, frost goes down 36, 39 inches in a typical winter. How does 24 inches deep, what's that do?
Well, I'm not a builder, but...
That's not information you've, you're telling us, but that's...
It's a mailbox post. It's not, it's not as critical as the foundation of a structure. So I think 24 inches in this part of the country has proven to be somewhat adequate. It may heave up a little bit, but it's probably not something that the average person even notices.
Okay, I have over-engineered everything in my house, then.
Again, the house, house far different than mailbox post.
So, yeah, so how much time do we spend inspecting mailboxes before we plow every year?
It, you know, that's hard to quantify. What we do is we typically send out the dry... What we do is we typically send out the driver assigned to a zone to look for various hazards. Those include tree limbs that might hit the truck, plow bangers, as we call them, or manholes that have kind of become a little raised up over time. Mailboxes is a component of that as well, so...
Is this when they put the stake, the stakes in at the radios and stuff?
Yeah, we no longer do that, but no, that would have been a different time. So I guess to take a guess at how long we spend, I would say anywhere from four to eight hours in a zone. There are six zones, so...
But going with option one over two or two over one won't necessarily save that because you're making the trip anyway. Your staff is already out there looking for all those other hazards before we plow.
Yeah, although, I mean, if we, if we're pulling mailboxes off our scam, it does speed up the process, but yes, we would still be going through the zone.
I get you. Okay. Other thoughts?
I like option two.
Okay. Danny?
I'm a two.
Number two's fine with me.
Vote in the air.
All right. Any other discussion? We can move on? I mean, we can talk about it more, but it sounds like it's unanimous for option two. And while I had this, I guess we're approving this policy, then?
We'll put it in the policy folder and bring it back to you.
Okay. Perfect. Moving on, item C, pond and basin issue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recently, the board had had some discussion, along with some residents who had commented about the use of ponds and basins. I just wanted to provide some insight into my research and conversation with a representative from the Illinois Department of Natural, these Natural Resources, IDNR. I spoke with Andy Plack. He's a district fisheries biologist overseeing our area. He offered some feedback. The majority of the stormwater basins in our area could benefit from more active fish pulls, as he said. Basically, the fish populations grow rapidly within these basins. As compared to the natural life cycles or fishing activity that would cull those populations, the growth happens very rapidly. He also spoke specifically about the Foxmore Basin because he has spent some more time doing in-depth evaluations there in recent years. It is definitely overpopulated, is what he shared with me. State law currently allows fishermen to pull five largemouth bass and unlimited numbers of bluegills. Those are the species that really make up the majority of our native fish populations in the basins. There are some other types in there, but not, either not native or not of real concern. So the two that they're really policing are largemouth bass and bluegills, but you can pull unlimited bluegills, so it's really largemouth bass. IDNR recommends that the best solution for us may be to adopt a cooperative management agreement, under which agreement our local officers could also enforce IDNR laws, if you will. If that was something the village wanted to adopt, it could be added to the book for 2019. If it wasn't adopted in a timely fashion, it probably wouldn't be added until their 2020 edition, which is essentially when it would be implemented. Another option could be, as he suggested, a village ordinance that might contain regulations that the village wants to set. I've discussed this with legal, and we're not certain at this time if that's something that could be done because we're non-home rule. But essentially, if we were to adopt some regulations of our own, typically when communities do that, they're more strict than the IDNRs, and therefore they lack the ability to really support the community. They sometimes have to pull those resources out of the community. So not something that I think we should recommend at this point. And the last thing is really, he just could not stress enough that these ecosystems would benefit from some additional culling or fisherman activity. With regards to placement of signs, IDNR does not offer signs at no cost. I think that was shared at a prior meeting. That's not accurate. Furthermore, they did suggest that if we add no fishing signs, it may imply that things like swimming, boating, and ice skating would be permitted. So it could open up a little bit of a can of worms or a legality there, or a liability, I should say. So I just, not so much that we need to have a discussion. We're welcome to, obviously, but I wanted to share that research and feedback before my departure.
Awesome.
It kind of contradicts what the resident said because he was feeling like it was overfished. And it sounds like it's not the case. The case is...
Again, he hasn't done in-depth study of all of our basins. He did do some recent in-depth study in Foxmore, and he said it's definitely overpopulated.
The, Brian, the basin that's along Bryan Lane, and driving by it on the sidewalk, there's some sort of signage currently. And I can't remember what it says, but there's some posts occasionally. And if we're, I like the signage idea, but I think Todd is correct that if it implies that they can swim and that sort of thing, maybe we need to do both of those signs, no swimming, no ice skating, blah, 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 blah.
I don't think they wanted no fishing because then nobody could fish. What you would want is...
No, it's not a no fishing sign. It's saying what your limits are.
Well, there's two signs. One has a picture of the fish, because half the people don't know what they look like, and it says the length and how many you're supposed to catch. And those are very popular in Wisconsin. Now, you're saying they do not have those, Todd, right?
They do not supply those at no cost.
Okay. And then the other thing is the guy wanted a catch and release. We could say, we recommend catch and release, and put those signs around, which we would have to have Public Works make and throw two, three around that basin, just make that guy happy. And I think it would make everybody happy, that if people read it and say, well, it's like, we recommend catch and release, maybe somebody wouldn't say, I'm taking this one fish home.
But the DN R is saying, don't catch and release. We need to get them out of the pond. You gotta cull the herd.
I don't know about that.
I may be reading between the lines, but he says no more than five largemouth bass, but at the same time, there's not enough fish pulls. So it seems to suggest that maybe they wouldn't even enforce that limit because they're looking for some additional activity.
Todd, what is the cost of those signs?
So we have about 18 basins that we're responsible for. If you figure just three signs per basin, which might not be adequate at some of those basins, given the size, approximately $100 a sign if it, I mean, I was estimating based on like a no parking sign size. If we're gonna start adding pictures, the sign's gonna grow ultimately. And that's a half, half post. Another thing to consider if we move forward, that is, that's probably susceptible to vandalism, you know? It's one more area that the kids are gonna stick the firecrackers in the pole, they're gonna wiggle them out of the ground, toss them in the lake. I'm not trying to sound negative. People aren't often looking for mischievous behavior, but it does happen. It's a maintenance item.
It happens on the signs that we currently have on our bike path, and the little free libraries and that. It does happen. And so you're saying 100 bucks each?
Yeah, so that estimate based, multiplied across, it was about $6,000 for an initial installation. And then maintenance is an ongoing item. So if they're lost or broken, they need to be replaced.
Okay.
And that's not man-hours, that's just material cost.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments on this? I don't want to cut it off, but I do.
I would like to pursue the ordinance extension that he discussed, not so much to enforce fishing limits, but do you have a license or not? So that would at least empower, if there was a complaint, an officer could intercept the fishermen and say, may I see your license, please? That could be the first thing they could ask for. And that, I think it's a $125 ticket.
I'm not sure. I'll have to research that, too.
My understanding, however, based on just the language of the regulations in the fish code, is that any of the money gets remitted back to IDNR. So while the village would be able to enforce it, the village wouldn't keep the funds that they do procure from enforcing it.
Yeah. There's a fish code?
It is called the Fish Code for short, the Fish and Aquatic Life Code.
So as I understand that, trustee Bond, your comment, in order for local officers to be able to enforce that type of behavior, it requires the cooperative management agreement adopted with IDNR?
I haven't heard that phrase used, so I won't say yes or no, but we need to incorporate those laws into our ordinance. This is the way I heard it expressed.
And that may be applicable in a home rule. I'm not sure how that works.
Based on just the state statute and what the cooperative agreement, I didn't see in the statute, but that might be somewhere in the regulations, is that you can, there's concurrent jurisdiction. Again, it's just that the money gets remitted back to IDNR, but it wouldn't prohibit the police department now from being able to enforce, that they'd have concurrent jurisdiction for enforcement purposes, just not as far as fining.
The cooperative management may refer to the fish population. They do have an agreement where they would ensure a healthy fish population, even should a fish kill or something unexpected happen. So that may still be worth looking at. I think that the Foxmore Basin was overstocked from the get-go. My information was that they put like 20,000 fish in that. And assuming they've been productive, there's quite a few fish in there. One good reason is the heron have had fun with the small fish, I know that.
So, to take a step back, so what's the, I guess, who would enforce this? Our police officers could enforce this?
As I understood it, under the cooperative management agreement, it would allow for our local officers also to enforce the IDNR rules, laws, if you will.
Yeah.
That would have to be adopted, and then it would have to be published into their book, which when, if done in the next two or three months, could probably end up in the 2019 edition. And that's when it would basically take effect. So I don't think that based on your adopting, it would automatically take effect, but at the beginning of 2019, then local officers could potentially question, if I'm understanding your intent.
Yes.
And what is the, I guess, what's the concern right now? Because I do worry about our police department, who's, you know, strapped on manpower as it is, you know, enforcing fishing regulations.
The concern that I've been exposed to are that a number of, shall we say, daytime fishermen don't even live in Montgomery, and they certainly don't contribute any of the cost of maintaining those basins, whereas all the property owners do. And occasionally, a property owner will say, you know, this is catch and release. Only you've got a bucket of fish here. Do you live in Montgomery? And sometimes they'll answer, and sometimes they'll get belligerent.
Yeah.
And it's an irritant to people to have folks in their neighborhood collecting a product that they haven't assisted in any way paying for.
I get you. And we can't regulate fishing in that pond because it's a public...
Not really, so...
It's publicly owned.
I think the circumstances where I would see it likely being used is if a resident has intercepted a fish or person, and they become belligerent, and they just call the police and say, would you please see if this guy's got a license or this lady's got a license?
If they have a license.
If they have a license, it's a public body of water.
Yeah.
That's the, the other possibility is that we don't view it as a public body of water because our residents are paying for it.
Sure.
But I think it's more important to let people enjoy it myself.
And it's really the only one pond is Foxmore. That's the ones where the big bass are. And some of those others out there that are real huge and you got green all over, nobody fishes those.
Actually, the gentleman that came and spoke actually lives by the one that's right off of Concord with the little free library right next to it.
Yeah.
That's the pond that he fishes. And that gets quite a bit of activity over there, but again, it's a public entity.
It is wonderful that people are showing so much interest in the basins. And we've got a litter pickup scheduled, and people are concerned and willing to participate in the maintenance and the appearance of them, and the fishing's part of it. Right now, the likelihood of the game wardens ever gonna come to any of our basins is pretty remote. But if a policeman felt it to be appropriate, they could stop and say, may I please see your license?
I think there's only two game wardens in the whole northern lawn. I know which one Utah do, but there's one in South Elgin, and there's one somewhere else. There isn't that many of them. The best bet probably would be when the guy had six bass instead of five, you take the one out, you hit the guy with it, and the cops are coming, you don't have to worry about it.
It's assault.
All right. So with that, who's in favor of at least looking at these two options at a future meeting? Either the signs or the agreement with our officers. I would like our police department to opine on that at that time. You guys want to look at this at a future meeting?
Sure.
Guys and girls? Okay. Done. We were unfinished.
Check down item. Bryan Lane, ComEd, where are we?
Bryan Lane.
Yeah, so I think we're in a position that we can advertise.
Forbid?
Forbid. We don't have all the feedback from ComEd yet, but what I was thinking is we would advertise and project an award date on May 14th, the board meeting on the 14th. And if we, during that period, if we learn some additional things from ComEd, we can issue an addendum to either extend the bid award if we need to, or issue an addendum in the interim.
So you'd be going out to bid prior to May 14th, reading its public bids, so public bid opening on May 14th?
The, we would bring, if everything went, if we had, if we had all the information we need from ComEd, we would bring it to the board for approval of award to a contractor at the 14th.
Okay.
That would be our plan. But I'd like to just, if there's some, what may happen in the interim, if we learn more from ComEd, we may issue an addendum if needs be.
Okay.
So my, and I wondered about this, if, because ComEd replied with some like initial surface level comments about permits, they come back with design changes? What's the impact?
Well, and again, I think we can address that with an addendum, as long as we get some, there's, apparently, there's eight groups that look at the plans at ComEd, is what we've now understand. We've heard back from one of those groups. So we've got seven other groups that, now, some of them may not be significant, I don't know that. But we're trying to get, distill it down to find out what, you know, what is the issue or what could be those issues. And what Matt is pointing out is if there's a design element that needs change, let's say they want us to use a different pipe or whatever, we can handle that with an addendum, but I'd like to get that out before we get our bid so we don't have to issue a change order after. That's the main thing.
Sure.
So, you know, I think we can move forward, but we're gonna ask for some flexibility as we keep moving here so that if something comes up, or if we find out from ComEd, there's something more than we knew about, you know, we may extend that bid date.
Okay. Thank you.
Have they given any indication of when?
No.
So the eight groups, I mean, could that be like IDOT's project where it's later this year?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
We just don't have enough experience with them to really know.
And after that one meeting, I reached out to the new ComEd representative, who was very agreeable to poking around in there. And I can do that again when the time's right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
I presume this is for us to look at, the streets, and then at the same time, digest it and bring it back next meeting for Pete to describe it?
Well, we just wanted to let you know that we did have an open house today from 5:30 to 6:30. We had, you know, several residents attend. It was just an information session. That was the PowerPoint that was running in the boardroom, and then we gave copies to the residents that wanted it as well. So it's really informational, and they are going to start work on the project as soon as the weather allows. We don't have a detailed schedule yet, we're asking for that, but honestly, because of the weather and the delays, you know, we don't have it at this time. But, you know, the project is going to start, and we are, it does have a wide range. We have streets that we're resurfacing. We're also doing sidewalk ramps in many different locations to become ADA compliant. And then we're also doing sidewalk replacement in several subdivisions. So the boards are here, so if... the boards are here, so if you want to talk about it anytime, happy to go through it, and we can go through the PowerPoint at the next meeting if you'd like.
We put those up maybe in the lobby and whatnot. I don't know if anybody would look at them, but, you know, you just had them at the, and thank you, by the way, for bringing those to the coffee with the mayor on Saturday. And there was a few residents there that were looking at those, and I think it's good information for, for folks to have, because yeah, there's sidewalk all over the place, little sections, so. Thank you. All right, anything else? I would like to thank Todd for your help and your work here in Montgomery. It really has been a pleasure working with you. We thought we'd keep you extra late on the last, the night of your last meeting, so I really do appreciate it and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. It's been my honor.
Are those, are those tears in your eyes, or are you just really tired? Okay.
He wants to go fix some mailbox posts.
Yes, is the answer.
We have a special village board meeting two nights from tonight at 5:30. Our next village board meeting will be the 23rd, 7 p.m. This room. Entertainer motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heitz.
Thank you.